All right, good evening, everyone. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, August 25th to order. At this time, many things going on in the world again. Haiti's still going on, Afghanistan, a lot of things. So a moment of silence for whatever you are thinking about tonight. All right, thank you. Alderman Doorman, if you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Brian, our city clerk, if you please call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Doorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Grip.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Amber.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. So again, everyone, welcome as we begin the meeting of the city council. I'd again like to welcome everybody here in attendance in the chamber and then anybody who's watching on our particular computer mobile devices. We certainly respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters and anyone throughout the region. We are happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make this Davenport a better place for everyone. If by chance you have a phone, especially for the folks in here, if you please put it on silent or turn it off simply because it doesn't get in the way of someone talking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. You'll have five minutes and please be respectful, we'll be respectful of you. Thank you. Will an Alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for August 11th, 2021?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
And any opposed? Very good. City Administrator, Ms. Spiegel, any updates?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Next item, will an Alderman please move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for August 18th, 2021? Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one proclamation this evening. It's for National Women's Equality Day. Alderwoman McGinnis will please read.
Thank you, Your Honor. City of Davenport proclamation, whereas Women's Equality Day commemorates the passage of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, and whereas historically, women in the United States were not entitled to full rights and privileges, public or private, legal or institutional, and whereas in 1971, the U.S. Congress designated August 26th as Women's Equality Day, and whereas women of the United States have united to ensure that all rights and privileges are available to citizens equally regardless of sex, and whereas women continue to break through historic barriers by using their voices and votes and serve as leaders in our community, and now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim August 26th, 2021, as Women's Equality Day in Davenport and encourage all citizens to celebrate the progress that has been made in securing equal rights, freedoms, and opportunities for women while continuing to value the great contributions they have made to our community. Dated this 25th day of August, 2021, I move the proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
And I have today, we have today, accepting is David Stewart with the Quad Cities National Organization for Women. Dave, if you could come down.
Thanks.
I was expecting you to say something. Now, the other thing about Dave that you don't know is...
Ms. McGinnis? If you can say it.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Dave is a 40-year member of the National Organization of Women. He just retired from 40 years of service in human services in the Quad Cities. He's a proud Davenporter. And so tonight I have something special. I was, I was, I won this a couple of years ago. Alderman Dickman's a talented, and I thought was appropriate for you tonight, Dave. So I would like to band you with this. Votes for women, if I could. I think you're, take your arm there.
Oh, yeah.
There you are. Okay. Very good. So, thank you.
You like her a lot.
David, you want to say anything?
Again, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for Zoom meetings. Came out about three weeks ago and I thought, oh, I have to ask. And I asked and you all said yes. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, David. Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. So tonight, if you're not figuring out, it's kind of one of those really cool nights where we recognize a whole bunch of folks for a whole bunch of things. And that's what we really like doing and that's what this city and this community is all about is recognizing folks and all the amazing people that do so many amazing things. So the next one is, well, we tried to do it a little bit ago, then we went back and forth and we're finally getting back after it. Mayor's Community Excellence Award. So the one for August this year is, goes to Humility Homes and Services. So I'll read a few things. Humility Homes and Services is a local nonprofit committed to ending homelessness by providing housing opportunities and support services in the greater Quad City area. Humility serves on average 350 individuals and families per night between their shelter and housing programs. During fiscal year 21, Humility worked consistently addressing homeless in the Quad Cities, reaching over 1,100 people who participated with their services. Of these, over 600 individuals received shelter, emergency shelter, while over 550 participated in other housing programs, including street outreach, preventative support housing, rapid rehousing, mission focus housing, winter emergency shelter, and supportive services for veterans' families. Humility routinely serves the most vulnerable in our community and a disproportionate amount of people who identify as racial or ethnic minority compared to the general population of the Quad Cities. Humility navigated a global pandemic which drastically has increased the number of individuals served. During the first year of COVID-19, Humility assisted over 824 first-time participants who had not assessed homeless or housing services prior to the pandemic. Our veterans team, their veterans team, was a key partner in ending veteran homelessness in the Quad Cities along with Davenport and others, making the Bay State region only the 80th community in the United States to reach a goal of ending veterans homelessness here. Humility Homes and Services was a proud member of the application that we did to the U.S. Internet Agency Council on Homelessness. Humility launched the Supportive Housing Pilot Project, providing housing to over 10 individuals experienced chronic homelessness that have a history of arrest or needing emergency treatment for behavioral help. And I'm proud to give this award. And ladies, if you'd please join me, Ashley Vailas, Kristi Adamson, Michelle Pasternak, and Chloe Quintero from Housing, Humility Housing, please join me in accepting this wonderful recognition.
So on behalf of the City of Davenport, the city council, our staff, we are so proud to have you in our community. We're so proud that the work you do, helping people that are very vulnerable and finding them shelter, and I'm so proud that I get to just, you know, watch you and do good work.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Please.
We'll take off our masks though.
What's up, you?
Sure, we just have a few things to say. I will speak up here so you can all hear me. Thank you to the mayor and to the rest of the Davenport Aldermen for this special recognition tonight. We are accepting this award tonight on behalf of our entire Humility Homes and Services team. Our direct line staff are really the ones that deserve all of the credit. And our mission to end homelessness in the greater Quad City area will only be accomplished through strategic partnerships like we have with all of you across every sector and the important support that we have in all of our community as well. We have a long road ahead of us, which I'm sure all of you realize, to reach our goal of ending homelessness in the Quad Cities. And we look forward to a day where every person in the Quad Cities has a place to call home. So, thank you very much for the award tonight.
So thank you. This also might be the night of some powerful women also, so that's really cool. The next one, speaking of powerful hitting women, the Assumption Girls softball team. So a couple little tidbits of their simple accomplishments this year. A 40 and 3 record. MAC, yeah, MAC Conference Champions. Coach Farrell, the Coach of the Year. State Champions, fourth title in five years. First Team All-Conference, Anna Wallers, Conference Player of the Year. Olivia Wardlow, I apologize if I don't say your name right. Libby Madden, Bellinigie, and Sidney Rowe. Then a whole bunch of second-team and conference people. Three players on the First Team All-State, again, Anna Wallers, Olivia Wardlow, and Bellinigie. Two players on three, on Third Team All-State, four seniors moving on to play college softball. Been in the state tournament six consecutive years. So ladies and coaches that are here, I'll meet you and we'll present you with some certificates on behalf of the City of Davenport. Great representation, so proud of you. So please join me.
Ladies, I'll call your names, just come up. We'll, I'll hand it to Coach, shake your hand, and then I think we want to picture individually, and I'm sure parents do too. So, let's see. Coach Ron Farrell. Thank you very much. We'll turn around and get a picture. Whatever you want to do. Okay, all right. Helen Song. Good. Emily. Yatony, yes? Bella Nagy?
It's Nedgy, but...
Nedgy. So 10 foot just for everyone I get on. Okay? Anna Wallers? Abby Odean? Bella Stroffgergen?
She's too bashful.
Okay? Molly Rowe? Sidney Rowe? Bailey Peterson? Jessie Wardlow? Maddie Look? And Lauren Miller?
Ah, that's the definitely not least.
So everybody go over there. Counsel, you want to get behind him if you want? Scoot over and get behind him. Or stand beside him or behind, wherever you want, right? But you're the one standing aside and Jerry's going to maneuver. Parents do your thing, whatever. First, how are you doing?
Now I can't, you covered gray up now. We'll do one on the camera, one on the phone, and then parents. Okay? Yep. One, two, three. One, two, three. We're going to do a flash on the camera as well. One, two, three. Okay? Sorry, we're almost done. All right, one, two, three. Now for parents. One, two, three. Thank you.
Anybody else? Good job. Coach, if you'd like to say something at the end.
Well, Anna was looking forward to speaking, but I guess I will. Sure, oh, absolutely. Yeah. I thought maybe I was killing the time to help you get back there. Really, I just want to thank you, Mayor, and all the Aldermen for honoring our girls or recognizing them in front of everybody. It's no accident that they've been to the state tournament six times in a row. They're a very hardworking, very wonderful group of young ladies that do represent the community very professionally, and I'm extremely proud of how they've handled themselves in the season as well as over at the state tournament each year. And so I'm just pleased that you were willing to recognize them tonight. So thank you very much.
So I usually say now, you know, welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but in case you don't want to, we'll pause for a moment too for you to leave. You're welcome. All right, very cool. So continuing the recognition this evening, recently, and I think everybody's aware that our wonderful fire department just achieved another national accreditation. So let's give them a hand. But I wanted to make sure everybody's aware, and I think we need to take the opportunity to do something special here. So we did a quick research and we don't, we think we're the only city in the state of Iowa, maybe a lot of other places, that has more than four accredited departments. We have six. Okay? So nationally accredited by organizations that come from the outside, put eyes on and go through a pretty strenuous process, both checking records written and interviews. So kudos to our Davenport Police Department, Park and Rec, Fire Department, of course, our library, our Public Works, and then without, I can't not say to our finance who just, this week, right, Miller? A few weeks ago, got two national awards. Excellence in Financial Reporting and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. So if I could have those folks, the leaders of those organizations, and I, yeah, I said library, come up here and we'll take a council and group picture also, but let's give them a hand. So leaders, police, fire, library, Public Works, finance, city administrator, come up here, let's stand right here and we'll all kind of group behind you here. All right? I know we did that, we were a little off with the softball thing, but so be it. Hey, I didn't either, but you, you're fine. You always just... So please scoot in here, folks. You don't have to have a gap. Ms. Spiegel be in the middle. Yep. You guys kind of slide this way and we'll all kind of get in your boundaries. Remind, if you need to tell us to turn sideways or something, right? Everybody, you got everybody? Okay. So Ms. Spiegel, I'll invite you. If you want to say anything on behalf of them, since you're the leader. Yes, Ms. Dick, Alderman Dickman wants that finance logo up there next time.
So Mayor, I would just add, and I think we've talked about it a lot over the past two years, how extraordinary our leadership team is citywide. Some don't have accreditation agencies with which to pursue, but that doesn't mean we don't strive for excellence every day. And while we have lots of room to grow and lots of things to make better, which you all know, the team here is dedicated to working hard for this community every day.
So I'll just say, on behalf of myself anyway, and if anybody else wants to comment, certainly, we talk a lot about what we do and how we do it, and one thing I want to say is, which is very important, we search out better ways. We search out best practices and want organizations from outside of here to come to us and test us and challenge us and get after us on, on how we do business. And the recognitions that these departments, and I agree with Ms. Spiegel, there are other departments that are kicking some, you know what? Now be careful what I say, all right? But are doing great, right? And so that's what we're proud of, that's what we do, that's what, I'm proud of the council, because they, the council folks here challenge the staff with questions, with inquiries on to do better, right? That's a good thing. And then the staff executes, and every day they try and do the best for the betterment of this community, and outside agencies continue to recognize that. So again, let's give my hand. So any other petitions or any comments? Okay, give me a moment to ring in here. I'm sorry, Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just to be brief, as a proud Assumption graduate, thanks for honoring that team. Coach Farrell does a great job and of note, while she left and probably saved herself a little, maybe she might be a little timid and embarrassed, but Ms. Anna Wallers was a four-time First Team All-State and All-State Tournament Team player and was twice named a captain, so pretty, pretty, pretty awesome as having her dad be a good friend of mine for a long time. I wanted to say that. And then second, would someone please remind me, I had a brief conversation with someone in the audience tonight, when do I ask to just remove one item from consent so that person can, can make that? Is that after motions?
You do that after the consent agenda is, is moved and seconded.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm done.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderwoman Lee.
I have to get retrained again all the time. I really appreciate the National Women's Equality Day proclamation, and it's interesting because about a little over 30 years before I was born, women got the vote. And I've been waiting all my life to be recognized by the U.S. Constitution as having equal rights under the Constitution. In the 70s, when I was just getting out of junior high, the Equal Rights Amendment was brought up and it failed to get ratified by enough of the states in the limited time that was available for getting that ratified. We still, as women, we still make an average of 80 cents less an hour than a man, and that's if you're white. If you're not white, you make a lot less than that. So we're still waiting for equal rights under the Constitution, for equal pay, and when you don't get paid the same, you don't get retirement. And that's a real problem, where a man would make more money than a woman, your retirement, when you're ready to retire, or your social security is also substantially less. So it affects you your entire life. So I'm still waiting for equal protection, equal rights, and equal opportunity under the United States Constitution with an Equal Rights Amendment, and I hope you all will continue hopefully working towards that recognition. And that's, oh, I also wanted to say Title IX. The fact that we're seeing more and more girls and young women excelling in sports is because of Title IX of the Civil Rights Act. And when I was growing up, we, girls could not even run on the playground. The boys could, but we couldn't run on the playground, we couldn't play sports, we didn't have any sports opportunities even. Title IX made a huge difference, so I am always thrilled when I see girls and young women excelling in sports, to now where the point is, in some sports, they're actually playing together, men and women, and I look forward to that more and more. So we've, we've made some progress, and I hope the Title IX continues on because it's made a huge difference in so many girls and women and their ability to move forward and their ability to just show their excellence. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to celebrate and thank everybody that participated in downtown's Alternating Currents event last week. It's an event that's getting bigger and better every year. If you're not familiar, many of our downtown businesses get an opportunity to host all sorts of entertainment that ranges from music to comedy and other arts. I got a chance to see the Quad City Symphony play, and then within about a half an hour, I walked just a few blocks and got to see pro wrestling where a gentleman named the Chief of Beef won his competition. So if that's not culture, I don't know what is. We're doing something right here in the Quad Cities. And I also wanted to remind you that this year, St. Patrick's Day is in August. This Saturday, the St. Patrick's Day Society is going to be hosting their grand parade in August here this year. That's the only two-state St. Patrick's Day parade in the country. I'd venture to guess it's also the only St. Patrick's Day parade in August. They're doing a wonderful thing to keep their tradition alive, and I suspect they're going to need a little extra enthusiasm and help from the crowd that we draw. So wanted to make an invitation to all of you to join me in downtown Davenport this Saturday to celebrate our Irish heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Grip.
Thank you. Actually, very similar to Alderman Condon's comment, so I wanted to point out what an incredible weekend it was in Davenport and the Quad Cities as a whole, but the Riverfront Pops, Floatzilla, the East Village had the Wine Walk, Alternating Currents, Big Brothers Big Sisters did the Over the Edge fundraiser on the Blackhawk, and the, the streets of downtown were, were alive with people. It was great to see. Alternating Currents continues to get better, and probably the highlight of my Alternating Currents, I didn't see Mr. Beef, the wrestler, like JJ did, but I, I did take in a concert with my wife at, at the New K Square at night, and it is beautiful with the, with the festoon lighting and the, and the blue-black backdrop, and the Fog feature is ready to go but not turned on yet, so I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting for that. It should be at night. It, it really was, is a beautiful spot, and the best part about it was as we sat there, there were literally 100 pedestrians in an hour. Walk by, stop in the park, watch the concert. Maybe they stayed, maybe they went to the next spot, but it really is about getting people out and enjoying their, their downtown. So the last thing I'll say is this Saturday, if you're not into the St. Patrick's Day in August, you can come down and paint the, the riverfront railing with Steve Arons and some volunteers with the Riverfront Improvement Commission. We're continuing to, to do some upkeep. That's happening Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. at the Davenport Band Shell. So show up to the, the band shell, ready to paint, and maybe you can still probably catch some of the parade as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Grip. Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. My, my experience with Alternating Currents involved a drag show in a parking lot, so no complaints here. Also did want to just put out a reminder that school has started, hold on, take this off. School has started this week. As a parent, I am beyond excited.
It was my great honor this weekend to go to Floatzilla to represent the city, and there was a new competition this year, the Mayor's River Rivalry, which I'm pleased to say this was the greatest number of applicants per capita. I'm thrilled to say that Davenport run it, won it. Mayor, we paddled the competition this year, and so it will go back and forth. This is the first year, and so congratulations to you. Happy to do this, in your honor.
That's a lot of good discussion and recognition, so thank you, everyone. Okay, we have, we're moving on. No items on discussion, so we'll move to consent. Is there a motion for approval of consent?
Remove.
There's a motion, second. Alderman Jobchin.
Yes, would we be able to move item number 14 to discussion so a member of the audience could provide some discussion?
Yeah, you can just ask to take it off, and you did, so we're good, it's off. So, if anybody'd like to discuss, and then once he's done, if you want to put it back on, we'll put it back on.
On the agenda, but I had some issues about it, some questions about it. This is, I guess I was here a couple of weeks ago when there was some discussion about adding another $100,000 on to $1 million contract for the air conditioning units for the luxury suites at Modern Wilderness Park, and I was kind of like, and it was going to be 14 of them, and I said, "Wait a minute, why is that?" Because I know how the air conditioning is done in those luxury suites. If you look at them, the windows of the luxury suites below that, or no, above the windows, you see, every other one has a big louver where the air comes in and out to the air conditioning system. There are seven of them for our 14 air conditioning, for our 14 luxury boxes. And I guess it pointed out that it's already been approved to make those, make the replacements for those units because they're supposedly at the end of their life. But 1.1 million, including the screening for it, why are we doing it? Because right now, those units are above the ceiling, they're above the hung ceiling, and if you look at all the best skyboxes in the major leagues, they have hung ceilings. They don't have exposed ductwork, which is kind of something that was done maybe in the 80s or maybe the 90s. So, my question is, rather than, if it was just at your own house, let's say, for example, you would, when the unit went bad, you'd go ahead and replace it with a brand-new one. You wouldn't replace, you know, everything at once, you know, whether you need it or not. Perhaps we'd want to have a spare unit or something of the same type, so that when one is beyond repair, we can put it right in, we're good, and we're only at the cost of that unit. But what's being done right now, rather than having your units above the ceiling, we're tearing out the units, replacing them, we're tearing out the ductwork, replacing it, we're tearing out all the light fixtures, replacing it, we're tearing out all the electrical, replacing it, we're painting the walls above the ceiling, we don't have any acoustic treatment because we don't have a hung ceiling, we're going to be tearing out the fire sprinklers and replacing them, for a total of 70,000, maybe about $75,000 per luxury suite, just for the air conditioning. So, how does that make sense? I ask you, why don't we just, if we have to replace all the units, replace those seven units and be done with it, put the ceiling back the way it is. Perfectly nice, if we're committing to 1.1 million, say that costs 200,000, let's say, I don't think it'd be even that much, then we're going to have 900,000 we can give to the ballpark that perhaps everyone, every patron can use, and not just the people in the luxury boxes. I mean, it's one of those things, I don't understand how it got to that level. I think it was just a matter of, if you guys have a lot on your plate, nobody's had a chance to look at it closely. I ask you to look at it closely, and perhaps defer this to a future meeting, after pending reports from Public Works, and perhaps the city needs to just hire somebody saying, "We'd like to get away from spending all that money and do something that's needed," but nothing beyond that. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I asked that the item be placed back on the consent agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Okay? Anyone else? Very good. Please call the, roll Brian on consent.
Doorman.
Yes.
Lee. Miller.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Ambrose. Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
And Dickman.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. The next, Alderman Dunn, do you have something? Roger that. Next is any other ordinances, resolution, motion? There are none this evening. Is there any public with business? If there are, please come to the podium, five minutes, microphones above you, please state your name, order, address, if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you are. Welcome, Mr. Gosa.
Dan Gosa, I live in the 8th Ward. I want to thank Alderman Dickman for bringing up the speeding in school zones, because that's what I was here for tonight. Obviously, Monday was our first day of school. We did have an injury in a school zone for that instance. Earlier today, the Superintendent Schneckloff and myself were at Madison, we were doing a video to post to our social media while people were speeding right down Brady, and then Channel, or Fox 18 News happened to be across the street doing a story on the same exact thing we were doing, and I was getting interviewed, and somebody came across in a black Ford Mustang, so it would be on the news, hot-dogging it around the corner while I'm getting interviewed about people doing that. Our kids are our number-one asset in our community, in our schools, and if people aren't paying attention, it's 25 miles an hour. I mean, it's not that bad to do that in a school zone. People are texting, not paying attention, and one of these days, a kid's going to get seriously hurt. Thank God it hasn't happened yet, but there's going to be a day. I tell my kids all the time, when I'm in the parking lot of the grocery store or whatever, people are texting on their phone, they're not paying attention, and kids don't know any better. Kids are going to be horsing around on the way to school or on the way home, and someone's going to get pushed, shoved, whatever, and then someone wasn't paying attention, and they're going to hit someone. So, I always make it a point, I made it a point Monday night at our board meeting, to bring that up, and I really want to stress that issue. It is very passionate to us and the Davenport Community School District. All of our kids are our number-one assets in this community, and they are the future. And if people can't be considerate and only think about themselves and speed in school zones, that's just flat-out not tolerable. And I do want to thank the Davenport Police Department for doing some speed traps and things like that in our school zones. I greatly appreciate that. I hope someday we can maybe partner with the media and start shaming people, because it's ridiculous that you'll speed and put an innocent child's life in danger. There's absolutely no excuse for that, and I will get off my soapbox. And Alderman Lee, to answer your question about equal pay, I would shoot people towards organized labor where you work under a collective bargaining agreement, and your pay is set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gosa. Anyone else? Okay.
Sure. So, just a follow-up to the item about the children's playground or the destination playground, and I, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I talked about problems with our neighboring cities, Rock Island, and it's, they failed $10 million that they spent for the Walmart that they were hoping to put in, and it's kind of like as if, if they had only done a couple hours worth of market research, or even just, they could have, they could have saved all that money, and people would have a much higher opinion of their city government than they currently do. I know Dylan Parker, he ran in Rock Island, he ran specifically because of that. He was so outraged of that $10 million that was wasted by that. Anyway, so our destination playground, I'd like to show you a little bit of market research that I put together, and I wanted just for your approval, because I know you're going to think about this. It's not just out in the air, you know, that it's a destination playground. We're not going to be drawing people from Los Angeles, we're not going to be, we don't care about drawing them from DeWitt. I think what we're talking about is a three-hour radius from the Quad Cities, and what areas would be drawn toward us, toward that destination playground. Well, you've got Des Moines here, you know, say there's Des Moines, you've got Iowa City, you've got Cedar Rapids, a bigger area, you've got Dubuque, Madison, pretty good-sized, Rockford, Peoria, Springfield, Milwaukee, Chicago, 10 million people, 10 million people in Chicago. It far outdraws any of these others put together, and we've also got a rail line that very soon is going to be connecting the Quad Cities to Chicago at a cost of 275 million. Well, let's give them something to see. So, I think perhaps a destination playground is something we want to have. Perhaps, I don't think the location is right, I think it ought to be next to our existing playground equipment at, in Water Park, at Centennial Park, and because if it's successful, if that playground is successful, we'll want to add to it, whereas it's going to be totally landlocked at the current location. So, but, so the other thing is, what kind of a playground is it? I don't think if it's a baby version of a tiny fragment of Maggie Daley Park, it's not going to, it's not going to attract hardly any of these people, because these people in Springfield, they're going to go to Chicago, see the real thing. People in Des Moines, they might come, people from Cedar Rapids, they may come, for the most part, they'll come to Chicago. Or people from Chicago, they won't be interested at all. So, let's have something to attract those people in Chicago. That's our attraction. We need to think about, and in my own opinion, we need to go back to our history, and that's why I'm talking about the, our steamboat landing, because we are a river town, in essence. We shouldn't be afraid of it, we shouldn't be ashamed of it. Look at the Field of Dreams. They didn't turn themselves into a big league ballpark, they had an essence, which is the essence of baseball. So, our essence is a river, and it's a steamboat landing. So, that's what I think we ought to be working towards. Thanks so much, and I appreciate it. All the time. And if you take, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Brian Swainer, 2nd Ward, 2366 West 47. I've spoken many a time to you, counsel. I may be a little pushy, I may upset some of you for some of the things I say, but it comes from the heart, it comes from a person who's lived in this city most of his life, who had a son murdered, who's had dealings with our department to try and help improve. I realize things don't come quick, they don't come easy, but what I'm here for, and all the people I talk to, because my wife gets upset when we go out, "Oh, you know everybody." It's not that I know everybody. I've had the pleasure of meeting a lot of people. I've had people talk to me and ask, "Why do you go down?" Time after time. Because one person can make a difference. One person pushing can make a difference. The voices aren't silent when one person, but I ask everyone in this audience and watching, call your council people on the mayor, tell them how you feel. Some felt insulted by my Band-Aids a couple of weeks ago, but that message wasn't just from me, it was from several. We're a great community, but we can be 10 times better. We have our priorities need to be shifted a little more, in my opinion. We have a great city administrator, we have a great mayor, we have a great council, but I'm going to push you a little more and a little more, because where I live is Davenport. God willing, it'll be a long time, who knows? Tomorrow may change, but I'm here trying to make a difference. I'm not here to upset you, I'm not here to embarrass you, I'm here as a representative for someone who lives in the city of Davenport. Our growth since the 70s, wow, what happened? Eldridge exploded, Leclerc, Walcott, all the towns around. We brought in major industries, but it had a little bad side effect. The money for the schools went because of the way it was district. You know, I'm a little upset about that, but I understand, I'm very grateful for what this council has done, but we have a West End, we need to start pushing heavily so our school systems can get more money, we can educate better, we can make this a place more proud. I'm proud to be Davenport, but I'd love to be more proud of my city, and right now, I'm not. I've had people tell me, "You don't know what's going on in the background." Believe me, folks, I'm not stupid, I'm not a college degree graduate, but I talk to people, people talk to me. I know there's a lot of things going on in the background, but we need a little more push, we need it sooner. Three, almost four years for this "you" thing took too long. We have millions of dollars in property damage to cars, to homes, to squad cars, to city property. We got to do more, folks, and that's why I'm here, and I'll see you next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a good weekend, drink water, stay cool.